You mean Airbnb or?
Yeah, just rentals.
Just rentals. I mean, I've got, I've got data on every town. I've got data on every town that's off of two online platforms, scrub to get out the duplicates. Well, the, the hospital right now talks about a short term of ninety days or less. That's the working definition right now. And then, and, and then some. I'll do it whenever.
Gary looked good.
I think they're both thrilled.
His outlook is.
All right, I'm going to open the meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to February twenty-sixth Mashpee Board of Selectment's meeting. If you'd stand and join us on the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And again, if you would just join us in a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives protecting their rights and freedoms. Okay, thank you.
Tom, can I say something about silence?
Yes.
You know, we do this for people who serve the country and lose their lives. We do or don't do it for what seems to be the routine loss of life associated with gun violence, just most recently with kids down in Florida. And I think, I guess I've had enough silence. And I think that, in this instance, silence equals complicity. You know, we have kids sitting in schools across the country. My kid's in college. And I don't think that any of us can with a straight face tell them that we're adequately provided for their safety. And I think, you know, we, we sit where we are in Mashpee and think, well, that could never happen here. Yes, it could. We've trained our police on how to respond. We haven't done anything to deal with how to prevent. And I think that, you know, the national system is clearly incapable of dealing with this issue. And it's down, it comes down to people at the local level to bring some sanity and some sense and some pressure to bear to try and deal with this issue. And I just want to take a minute to say that I think that, you know, the kids who are the targets have finally said they've had enough. And they're organizing and they're bringing their voices to the table to try to deal with the problem that the adults have failed to, not only failed to deal with and improve, but have probably made worse. And so I know that, you know, there's a big protest on March twenty-fourth, I believe, where kids are standing up and saying, we don't want to be targets anymore. And they're right, they're asserting their rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in contradiction to, in an opposition to someone's unfettered access to what are effectively military-style weapons. So I think that, you know, the only way we take our country back and bring some sanity is to have new voices at the table. So if there are kids in Mashpee who are planning on participating or going to that event, making their voices heard, I think that's a great thing. I would encourage Mashpee students to stand up and assert themselves and their rights and their interests and their goals and objectives into this debate. And to the extent that any of them need assistance, either logistically or financially, to be able to participate and assert themselves in the political process, I'd encourage them to contact me. And if there's anyone who wants to gather to help kids engage in the political process so they can effectuate a change and protect their lives where we failed them, I'd also encourage them to contact me at my town email address. Thank you.
Just so you know, I did, a little late last week, was going to reach out and have some, the school committee, some of from the school department come in and give brief us and bring us up today what they do in our schools to protect the students. I ran a little late, so possibly the next meeting, we could invite the school committee.
I think that would be great. Sadly, most of it's around response. And not enough's happening around how do you actually prevent people from having the means in order to be able to commit these mass atrocities?
If I could, Mr. Chair, the school has gone through Alice training that I am aware of, and we've had similar training here at Town Hall. I'm not going to get into the details of it because they are security measures that I think should not be discussed in a public forum. However, what I will do publicly is commend the professionalism of the police department for the training that was provided. I think it was a real eye-opener for the staff here. I can't speak for the school because it wasn't at that, but there were positive comments.
Thanks, Ron. Kath, is there a?
I make a motion to approve Monday, February twelfth, regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 The Board of Selectmen in conjunction.
Going to public hearing going? Okay, I want to, that's a good idea. That's a great idea. All right, so we have a.
Approval, number three.
Number three, we have the approval of the one-day liquor license, March twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, Mashpee Wampanoag Rotten Gun Club. Always nice to have you here.
I make a motion, we approve the Rotten Gun Club.
Second.
Okay, roll call on that, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
A little bit of a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen in conjunction with the capital improvement program committee will conduct a public hearing on the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Said hearing will take place on Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty-five in the Wapoe Meeting Room Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road North Mashpee, per order of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen.
Do you want to, bring this forward, Rodney?
There is a number that was recommended through the committee vote. Selectman Gottlieb, Mr. Richardson, the distinguished chair of the Finance Committee, Chuck Gase here, is here, member-at-large, Don Thayer, Finance Director and Member, is here. And I think you have an outline of essentially vehicles from police as well as fire. And then there are some items from DPW, IT Recreation, Natural Resources, and Planning and Construction. If there's any specific questions regarding any of these items, then we could try to answer them. But this is what was ultimately voted on, and I don't know if you have any other comments.
No, I think that we, you know, were able to come up with a fairly responsive funding program for this coming year. Keeps our vehicles in pretty good shape, dealt with some critical needs of DPW, shellfish, or natural resources. And, you know, generally keeping our buildings in reasonably good maintenance and repair. So I didn't think there was anything critical that we didn't find an ability to address this year. Some of the things on people's wish list didn't happen, but I think we met the most pressing needs.
And I would just caution the board that there are a couple of items that have independent funding sources, like the ambulance receipts, and then you've also got the Harbor Master boat that would be coming out of waterways presumably.
That was, that was the one I have highlighted, was the Harbor, Harbor Master boat. That, does that have anything to do with the, the large boat? Do we still use that boat at all, the pontoon boat that we were, we got for?
Yes, we do.
This, this boat on here is a replacement for the small boat on Mash, on Mashpee Wakeby that was outpowered by the large boats that were, that it was pursuing. So the, I think the plan was that this boat will go on Mashpee Wakeby, and then the boat that's on there this past year will go over to John's Pond, where it's a little bit smaller, more confined area.
Donated to us?
That's the one that's at Wapoe.
It's in Little River. It's in Little River.
Okay.
At Patrols.
Yeah.
Yes, you are correct. This is more for the ponds.
Yeah, so you see that basically, you know, almost two-thirds of this is funded out of the general fund revenue and a third from reserves.
Chuck, Mike, do you want, did you have anything to add?
Anything, one, one more question, and Andrew, you may know. The, the garage, the storage garage and parking at DPW, I know at one time they were talking about a, a large facility that would house almost all of the vehicles. This is clearly not.
This is clearly not that. This is, this is just a.
This was the compromise.
Yeah.
Okay. In addition to what's existing, pretty much.
Yeah, it's a small facility that allows them to do some stuff out of the weather, but it's not the big rebuild redesign. That's, I don't think really on the table anymore.
Yeah, that's not on the table, Mr. Chair.
I didn't know if we were going to build in sections and I wasn't quite sure. So is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Call the closing.
I suppose we do.
Yes.
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 I make a motion, the board adopt the recommendation, two thousand, fiscal two thousand nineteen Town Manager Recommendations and for the CIP Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, and roll call on that as well.
Yes.
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 Right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mike. Mr. Stiglitz, thank you.
The whole committee is here.
All business, let's start there. Discussion of proposed meeting date and the agenda with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. There was a date open, it was March fifth. I worked, started working on this the end of last week, before that. But it, it looks pretty close. I wasn't sure if everybody could attend. I knew Mondays was better because I, I think we all do the same thing. We leave, we leave Monday nights available in the event that we miss the date or need to add another date. And that was one day that was, was pointed out that the tribe would be able to meet. In the agenda, I think it's important that we have an agenda so that obviously we can post it and have a discussion. I know that Andrew had brought up at least two items that were.
Four.
Four.
I got them right here.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Things I wanted to talk about were tribal views on compliance with the Mashpee Shellfish Regulations, tribal interest in allowing the town to use capacity at the Meeting House Road Treatment Plant, and if so, who would be the lead negotiators for the tribe so we could know who to talk to. Tribal housing plans and their intended compliance with the applicable zoning and building requirements at the Meeting House Village. Affordable, tribal housing, opportunities to jointly pursue funding for wastewater management economic development.
Jointly?
Yeah. Those are the four, and then, you know, obviously the last one would be, you know, something to do, an update on the land and trust status and what their intentions are, should they get a positive determination or a negative determination.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer, I don't know if they do, but.
Well, anyway, those are the things, I mean, you know, we, there's lots to talk about. Those are the four or five that came to mind to me. And I don't know what they've proposed to you in terms of their interests and what they want to talk about.
Similar, actually, very, very similar to what you, and I asked them to put them down in writing so that we would have an exact agenda before we went and we would post that next, you know, the open meeting rules and.
Oh, let's make sure we have an, Mr. BD will be watching that one.
Right, right. So that's what, you know, I told them that, I talked to Trish, and I said, this is important so that we have all the information prior to, so that we can all look at it and have.
Right, because there had been an earlier suggestion that the, the meeting agenda items that they had proposed were, you know, basically a schedule for future meetings and future topics, but not actually talk about anything about, anything of substance other than what we're going to talk about in the future. And if that's what they want to do, I'm not going. I'm not going, I'm not going to a meeting, I haven't waited two years to have a meeting to talk about what the next meeting's going to talk about. Not doing it.
No, well, I, I, well, we have four subjects that we can talk about.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, unless there's an agreement to have some substance on the agenda. It doesn't have to be my four or five, it can be other ones.
Don, you think we first should decide, is that date all right?
Yeah, that's, that would be.
That date's fine.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, but, you know, and it's up to you guys, you know, I understand the pressure you're under as chair to come up with something that, mutually amenable. I'm just saying, if there's nothing of substance other than what we're going to talk about in the future, I ain't going. I'm free, but I'm not going.
I want to see a very strong agenda, and that's what we stick to. I don't want, it's not a discussion open session meeting.
I can see those four questions being, they could cover the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
They could cover five meetings.
Well, and that's, that's the other part of it. I'm looking to hold this to a two-hour meeting. I think that's plenty of time, two-hour meeting.
Fine.
And anything beyond is just too much.
And they did list four items that they had requested, which I assume you got.
You do.
What are they?
One, introductions, two, scheduling of future meetings, three, designation of liaisons, and four, future agenda items.
Not doing that.
That's fine, because we have, we have the four questions.
I had, I had some other, other input from, from Trish.
Okay.
That is next Monday.
Yes, it is.
When will we have a firm agenda?
Well, it's next Monday.
Well, it's kind of a draw, we have one, people saying you're not going to come.
Right, well, I'd like to think we can do it by tomorrow. We have the date, we can, we come up with a solid agenda. I think Andrew comes up with four good points. I think we're all thinking about the same subjects.
I forward these to you guys.
And the time constraints of the other, I assume.
So you're going to.
Yes, if I could.
Go ahead.
Land and Trust, Shellfish regs, Housing, Meeting House Treatment Plant, and Opportunities jointly for Economic and Wastewater Grants.
Things that affect both of us, I think they're excellent.
Is that, is that what you want on the agenda?
I think that's clean cuts. I think that's all we have the time for. I think there's a long answer, answer for each of those questions.
I just forwarded you my email that lays them out in more detail.
Do you want us to, to post?
Ours? Yeah, and is there anybody who wants to add to that? John?
If we can get it, I mean, I think all four of those, we can expand on.
So we're not giving the, the tribe any?
I think you maybe can add, certainly everything that's, that they suggested are things we could talk about. My only objection is if that's all we talk about, we haven't talked about anything.
Those are quick responses.
Those are quick, you know.
That's what I'm asking you, are you putting them on it or not?
This would be fine with me, as long as they're additive.
Well, I mean, that can be stuff that they can.
But we have to post one agenda.
Right.
Yeah, it has to be one agenda.
Exactly.
Yeah, I am too. So what I'm saying, we're going to put all of them on it then, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'll speak to Trish tomorrow and see what her, what she wants to bring to the meeting, and we'll post that as well.
Why, she, we just gave you, we just gave it to you.
Yep, that's all she put, those, those.
This is all we have.
That's all we've gotten.
All right, let's post it. And I will reach out to her tomorrow, I'm sure she's probably watching tonight.
Okay. So we're going to put all of these items on there?
All of them.
And so it's Monday at the tribal headquarters?
Six-thirty tribal headquarters. What, I have to, she has to give me confirmation of that, but that's the plan.
At six-thirty or six?
Six-thirty.
And this will be televised?
Yes. I, I talked to Bill before I came in. He's aware of it as well.
Or maybe no, it's six-thirty, it says six on the.
And he has to post the.
Whatever.
The, the time on the channel eight, it won't be channel eighteen, it'll be on ninety-nine, channel ninety-nine.
Which he's sending to me.
Should we post that with the agenda, so people are aware?
Yes, it'll be a channel ninety-nine, it won't be on channel eighteen, because that's where they broadcast.
Yes.
So that can be posted with the agenda?
For everyone watching, channel ninety-nine.
Yeah, I believe I heard that they're going to put on channel eighteen, turn to channel ninety-nine.
Oh, okay, good.
Tom, on, on the memo from her, it does say five-thirty to seven-thirty, that's that two-hour timeframe, but do you want to change it to six-thirty to eight-thirty or what?
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't care.
And there at five-thirty.
Whenever.
I really don't, if she wants.
I'm just, I'm just, I want to make sure when we post it, we do the right time.
It's fine.
I was just going to go with that meeting, but that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Is that okay, John?
You want to confirm with her tomorrow?
No, she, that was her note, so we'll go, we'll go with her note.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Change the time, five-thirty on March fifth.
Are we having our recording secretary now?
Are you okay with that date?
All right. Okay, new business. Discussion and approval of appointment to the Conservation Commission, Stephanie Simpson.
I make a motion, we appoint Stephanie Simpson as an Associate Conservation Commissioner.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Number two, we have discussion and approval of the appointment of a deputy sheriff, Deputy Shellfish Constable, Richard Santiago and Ashley Fisher.
Santiago.
Santangelo.
Santangelo.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
For a three-year term, as requested. Uh, yes.
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 And they're already employed, this just gives them a collateral authority as a shellfish constable.
Okay, and number four, we have a review and discussion of the draft number one, May seventh, two thousand eighteen, Town Meeting Warrant.
Here we go again, right?
Yeah.
Comes fast, doesn't it?
Are we going to go through them all, or what are we doing?
Well, we should, shouldn't we?
I suppose we should.
I'm just asking.
Yep.
The first article one, I mean, we don't have the figures, so we can skip that one. Article two, appropriate sixty, I mean, these are.
Enterprise funds, funding expenses.
Same thing with human resource.
Are we taking any votes here, or are we?
You want to, we could, do you want to just go with it, just clear it up right now?
Well, we don't have final numbers for some of them. When do you, what's your timing? When do you need a final?
We can just go through and say.
To flag the ones, flag the ones we were concerned about.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If they need a conversation, right.
I believe it's March twenty-second.
Okay. So I'd say, I would say, you know, for you guys' purposes, if we don't raise a question about them, you're probably good to go. I would treat them that you're good to go, but some of them need numbers.
So down to article, article four, and that's just bookkeeping, a transfer of money.
Article five.
Article five is CPC funds, reserve funding.
Article six.
I got questions about this one.
Okay.
Which one?
Article six. These are Habitat for Humanity sites, so one at DeGrasse Road. It's suggesting the town contribute fifty thousand towards this property. But the lot was part of a subdivision plan that required affordable housing. So why didn't the developer do the affordable housing that was required? Why is this becoming a public expense? Because if he had affordable housing required, he got a density bonus, which means he benefited economically from doing it, and we're holding the bag to pay for the affordable housing. So I don't get that.
Good question. I got that question today by email.
Yeah.
You did, oh, from Andrew?
I don't surprise him.
So we'll ask the planning board.
He actually got it from me on Sunday.
So we have the.
I didn't respond.
I, I had a question at CPC on this, on this, because we're buying the property. And I, we've never done that before, we've always given them the property, the town has, for Habitat.
How much article we found?
This one.
This is article six.
They're paying for the property, John.
We're paying for the property, they want fifty thousand dollars to buy.
Right.
What came for the property, I thought this was one that gave it.
Anyway, I'd like to know why, why we're in the middle, why we're in the middle of this one if it was part of a subdivision plan.
To be continued.
And if they, and if they didn't, and if they didn't build it as they required to, and the planning board released the covenants, I want to know and know why.
So planning, we'll have planning board come in or get an answer?
Or some response, whatever your judgment is on.
Clear on the question, but I don't have a clear answer.
So it's not my only question on this one.
All right.
My other question is, the Great Neck Road North parcel deemed unbuildable, and yet we're making it buildable? If it's unbuildable under zoning, why are we contributing public money to build a house on a non-conforming lot?
This came up before, I don't like that either.
So.
Non-conforming.
Yeah.
Planning board as well, right?
Yep, both of them.
Or building.
Well, it isn't, it's a CPA.
It's a CPC.
Yeah, I think you need both of them in there.
Well, somebody's just got to explain the facts.
Yeah. CPC, it's their thing, they're the ones that gave the money, so.
Yeah, I voted no, because I didn't think we should stop buying the property.
No, we, we own the property, we have a vacant lot.
We give it to them.
Like, give this, give it to Habitat.
Now they're asking for us to buy. And that came up.
All right, so move on, article seven.
See if the town.
Again, it's, it's community preservation.
This is what they came in and asked, they got that, they got, the historic commission got that grant. So this is our share that we said we were going to contribute if they got the grant.
And then we went to article one.
That's all there was in the special, so. We've got just that question you have.
Just article six.
And the numbers to fill in on the front.
Right.
So with the exception of article six and the numbers, we're all set on the special?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, unless you have to add something that you discovered before March.
Okay, that's the budget.
Do you want to walk through the budget at all, how do you want to do this?
Oh, I think we should.
In terms of the budget, I do have a couple of numbers that have slightly changed with the handout. The bottom line has not changed, and essentially it's housekeeping and making some adjustments. The payroll administrator and, and accounting have caught a couple adjustments that were needed. Again, the bottom line did not change, but there were some changes in terms of the salary and wages in assessing the Treasures Office, GIS, and the Town Clerk's Office. the salary and wages in assessing the treasures office, GIS, and the town clerk's office. Natural resources and DPW and health, council on aging, and human services, the library, and recreation, and medical insurance.
I've gone over this with you, I'm satisfied with it, but I'll ask the elephant in the room question. You recommend twenty-one million, three eighty-one, five twenty, thirty-two for the school department. Are we gonna have a floor fight on, have they accepted this number?
Um, my understanding is, although I don't have confirmation, that the school is going to accept what I discussed um, at the finance committee meeting, whatever night it was.
Is that this number?
I think you gave them more money, didn't you?
I don't know what number that you're looking at.
I'm looking at, well, let me look off what you gave us tonight. I'm looking at twenty-one million, three eighty-one, five thirty-two.
We made that adjustment, Don, right, on that?
Yeah.
We, we made the adjustment, so that is the number that it, it was adjusted to after that finance committee meeting.
Basically, after that finance committee meeting, we were only, um, I think it was twenty-five hundred off.
Yeah.
Um, so essentially, the projection based on the tech, uh, the assessment came in lower than anticipated, we took that money and dedicated it to the school. And then, as a direct result of that, they were twenty-five hundred dollars short, or approximately. We said, you come up with that, and we got a balanced budget. And, uh, there were two school committee members here that night, and they walked away seemingly satisfied. So assuming they got a third, then we should avoid the floor fight.
To answer your question, the results from the finance committee, I also heard positive response from, to the school committee members. So they were encouraged by, after the finance meeting.
Did their rate of increase exceed that of the town side?
I'm sorry?
Did their rate of increase for their line item equal or exceed the percentage increase for the town side of operation?
It depends on what department.
I don't think so.
In general?
You're referring.
No?
No.
So they're consistent, they held consistent with the town operation? A little bit lower?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there are some departments that are up a little higher, and there are some departments that are down a little?
No, yeah, I'm just talking in the aggregate.
All right.
In the aggregate.
I just wanted to make sure, that's what you were talking about?
Town operation, school operation.
Okay.
Our budget running shot of any positions, in other words, like a couple years ago, we didn't fill a police position.
I'm not filling them.
So yes, there are vacant positions in this budget?
Oh, we have vacant positions.
Yeah, that are not funded in this budget.
That are not funded in this budget. Do you, do you know how many?
I believe two in police, two in fire, or three?
Two, I can't remember the number, I thought it was two and one, but I don't know.
We got a total number, no?
I can tell you that the positions that were not funded last year are not funded this year.
That's at least four.
I think it was four.
At least four.
So, so speaking of, are we still at a no new hi, a no new hire freeze here? I know we just put on two recently at the Shellfish, um, but those are just vacant slots, so it's, uh, those positions will open?
There wasn't a position.
Those were our positions, Tom, that were just changing.
Oh, the Shellfish constables, uh...
Yeah, that's not a hiring, that's just a designation.
Okay.
Yeah, but for the purposes of clarification, I'm not operating on the presumption that there's a hiring freeze. If there is, then you need to tell me that, because there are positions being filled all the time.
I don't think you need one.
We don't need.
I mean, I think, you know, you're holding positions open as you see fit from a management perspective.
Just fill in the vacancy.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Like, like, where's my engineer?
We're not, we're talking about existing positions, right?
Right.
Huh?
We're talking existing positions.
Yes.
New positions.
Not new positions, we're not creating new stuff.
Right.
Where is my engineer? So there are five positions.
Okay, now this is the-
It's in your free cash.
Yeah, been waiting since nineteen eighty-seven. All right, I'm comfortable with this.
Article four.
The budget's good, yep.
Article five. Transfer something we don't have.
Do you have an idea what you wanna do for OPEB?
Actually, two hundred, two hundred thousand?
Is that consistent with last year, or a little bit more?
More.
A little bit more.
Six.
Six I love.
Seven. This is all the revolving.
Yep. Yeah, you have to do it in advance now.
Number eight. Budget for paying access cable.
Take access.
That's standard, isn't it?
Just a transfer?
Transfer. Nine.
That's what it looks like.
Chapter ninety program, so we're buying.
Don, did nine, did nine change chapter ninety? Yeah, so this number here wouldn't be correct now, correct?
So it's less five thousand?
Yeah.
So it'd be six hundred, eight, eight hundred and fifty-six?
We're not voting on that, anyway, it's-
Yeah, we're not voting on that.
Yep.
Ten to create, now, uh, this one, I, there's, there's a problem.
Ten, just, let's bring in-
Ten, there's a lot of work that's gotta be done on that.
That's a beast nest right there.
Let's not get into that tonight.
We're holding it, we're holding it.
I got a big hold on that.
Okay, thank you.
You do?
Yes, I do.
Big, big conversation about that.
All right, okay. Another day.
Yeah.
Okay, that's waterways.
I would be curious what other towns have done on that as well.
Twelve. Resources, to fund the third and final year of water. King, thirteen.
Eleven is routine, by the way.
Waterways again, thirteen. Waterways fourteen. Mostly fifteen, kids club. Okay, sixteen, see if the town community preservation somewhere. Spence.
Kids Club's still holding its own as far as income and revenue.
That's what the recreation director indicates, yes.
Well, it's, I saw something, where is it? Where's the one, maybe I just, and capital expenses?
CIP, wasn't it? They did have something in, uh...
In capital.
Yes.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand dollars or something, wasn't it?
Right, yeah, it was.
You're talking about the capital improvement with the van, it's an ADA van.
Oh, it's a van?
Yes.
I was just wondering what it was.
Seventeen, continue the septic management program.
Now, does that come on the enterprise account for that?
Yes.
So their enterprise pays for that too?
Yeah, it just has to be on the capital plan.
Yeah.
That's the Lopez, that's the property transfer we talked about a couple weeks ago.
So eighteen thousand, right?
I got an issue with twenty. It's a petition article, so I know we don't have any say over, but...
Oh, yeah.
This is twenty-seven Center Street. I don't understand, you know, we're being asked to waive a, um, moderate income restriction on the property. I'm not sure why we wanna get in the middle of this.
My question is, is that central lawyer, is it even, is it even, I don't think it's a legal-
I'm not sure, but I, I, you know, the owner knew there were limits on the sale price when they bought it, it was cooked into their price.
Right.
And so I don't understand why we're being asked to, to take it out of affordability.
Yeah.
And if we are, why aren't we just buying it at the, um, cap limit, give it to the Affordable Housing Trust, instead of running around like they've been planning to find affordable housing? You got something here that's, that's price restricted already.
Yes, um, but I think this is-
It's not, I don't even wanna buy it.
It could be a legal-
We already turned it down, wonderful thing.
Yeah, I know, but I don't see how you-
I know it's, I know it's moderate, but the, what I'm saying is, it's price limited. And it doesn't, it serves no particular value because, um, anyone of any income can buy it. You just can't sell it for more than the appreciation rate around the region, it's like, it's really stupid. But, that said, you know, it might be, it might make more sense to buy this than it does to buy a, a free and fair market price house and make it affordable, 'cause this is already affordable, 'cause it's price limited. That said, I'm not sure why we wanna be in the middle of this thing.
I, I think we're gonna find it's an illegal item.
I think we need to get some advice from council on what our obligations are in this instance. And, you know, make a policy decision on where we wanna stand on whether we wanna put it back out or not.
It's a, it's a tough one.
Well, we don't wanna buy it either, because, that's the other thing, is if we buy it, we wanna make it affordable.
Yep.
While then we're doing what they asked to change it from moderate to something else.
No, but we could, we could-
So, you know, that would be wrong.
No, they wanna make it free, they wanna make it free market.
Right, on the release of the sale.
On the release of the sale, which sends it the wrong direction.
They're not gonna benefit until the, it's, it's the new owners.
But we can keep it.
We could buy it at a reduced value now, and just give it and put it into our affordable housing stock, and rent it as a housing authority property. 'Cause they're looking to, to spend money on CPC to buy houses and rent them at affordable rates. Well, one way to do that is to buy a house that's price restricted below the market and rent the damn thing.
That's right.
What's, what's the, the value on this, isn't it three twenty-nine?
First of all-
I think it's around that figure.
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
First of all, you gotta find out if it's a legal article, which I don't like how it is.
Anyway, we need some, we need some town council guidance.
Exactly. Uh, the only thing I can say is, obviously it's a petitioned article, and what I can also say is that town council has been speaking with council representing the petitioner.
Obviously, if it's not to form, it can be indefinitely postponed by the moderator, otherwise, we don't have any control over it.
And it's, and it's in litigation.
Man, right, but we do have the right to say we don't think it's a good idea.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know.
It was, it was a tough one, I mean, I, we've looked at that, John has looked at it, I've looked at it, affordable housing doesn't wanna touch it. They understand the situation. Um, Board of Appeals, same thing, they understand the situation.
Been caught with them right now.
Yes, it's just-
The CBA.
That is no fit for, they have no business for affordable, for moderate income, so they have no one to buy it.
Okay, but we're, you have an affordable housing crisis all over the Cape, and somebody's trying to convince me that there's, there's no solution other than to make that a market rate house.
Well, it's for resale. If you're buying it at three twenty-nine, um, you know, if you improve your property-
I agree with you, it's, as an investment, it's a dog.
Right.
If you're a private owner.
Then that's the problem, is finding, finding a buyer for that.
Right, well-
But if it goes into affordable housing, if you own it, but it's an expensive, affordable housing unit.
Okay, but if you look at what, if you look at what the housing authority was talking to us before with asking for money, you know, there weren't that many, I mean, you can't buy a structure for, for, what's the lowest price you're gonna pay for a structure? And then it's garbage, and you're gonna have to put money in to fix it. When you walk, you know, this is at least as habitable dwelling.
I mean, I, I'd have to believe you could, you could probably buy something, you know, for two hundred to two fifty, um, and put fifty into it and have a house, but you'd be pretty close to the-
You'd be pretty close. I don't know, anyway.
Forty thousand.
This is not updated, though, that's the problem.
Right.
Anyway, I just don't know why we're, why we're being asked to be in the middle of this thing.
Well, let me tell you something, I don't like, I, I kinda understand why we're in the middle of things when we're being sued by the same people. It's kinda stupid in my part.
They're just between a rock and a, they're high placing, that's when they, they can't move the house, they need to move forward.
Someone sues me, I don't like them.
Okay, but they bought the house under these conditions, with that deed, with that deed restriction.
Yes, I agree.
Right.
No, I, I understand.
Expecting someone that would be able to be placed in the plate, in the house.
And now they wanna break-
But if Hack says, you have no one to place you, no, no one to place under that moderate income criteria, what are they supposed to do?
Uh, it just, it stuns me that there's not people out there who can handle, take an affordable, a moderately affordable house, anyway.
It's the restriction, that's all it is, they, they eliminated us to the-
That's a bad investment, I understand that.
But they knew that going in.
Right, and they're not gonna benefit from the sale any more than they would any other, if they, if they had a-
Okay, but remember, this was a forty B permit, right?
It's a very sticky situation.
Okay, and so somebody built the house, and they got density credits, and the developer walked away and made extra money 'cause he put this restriction on it, and now after the fact, we're sitting here saying, waive it. So why was, why are we looking at waiving restrictions on properties that somebody economically benefited from after the fact?
It's already been done at a house in that neighborhood, because what they did is they filed a bankruptcy, and then the, then it was lifted.
Yeah, it's a stupid system. And, and we're complicit because we're giving-
I agree, but you gotta file bankruptcy, and they can lift that moderate income title by filing.
They don't, they don't use moderate, um, income housing any longer, they, they abandoning that-
It's called workforce now. It's not, it's not there, it's called workforce.
They could Airbnb it. For a mere three hundred dollars.
That's right.
It is a tough one, though.
Anyway, I wanna find out more about it before I take a position on this one.
All right, so we'll go with that at this point.
In this warrant, then ten and twenty, ten is on hold through the Board of Health, twenty is for legal review. Is that correct, any others?
Besides a bunch of numbers, yeah.
Besides the numbers.
Numbers, yeah.
Yeah, if anything else seems pretty straightforward.
Pre-Hohum annual warrant.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Policies.
Number five, Board of Selectment Policies. We have, uh, policy, Board of Selectment Policy zero six five, uh, distribution of board meeting agenda, which is-
The packets are back.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Packets are back.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
So it's, they are back, they would be by noon time, posted by noon time of the selectmen's meeting?
Yes, um, I have spoken to staff, and we're comfortable with this at this juncture.
So I have a motion, I have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. That'll wait another Andy.
Yep.
I just kept my mouth shut.
In, in the, in the spirit of transparency.
You got it.
For once, it works.
Like, keeping your motion?
Yeah, I don't do it often, but it worked in this instance.
All right, so we have Board of Selectment Policy.
Actually, I'm gonna write the date right down now.
Zero six nine, public records, public records access policy.
I make a motion, accept the policy.
Second.
It's the public records?
Yeah. So we're adding the town manager as a RAO?
Yes, um, sometimes we have unique requests, um, for public records. Without naming names, and there's some redacting that is necessary, and sometimes this has to go through town council. I would want to direct my staff, especially as the appointing authority, to take care of that, because to go outside of the appointing authority would be inappropriate.
I agree.
So you'd be the, you would designate the, uh, responsible person for that?
It's gonna be somebody in my staff, yes.
Okay. You need a motion on that?
I gave a motion.
You do, okay.
And we seconded, yeah.
You second? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Right.
Domestic violence.
Andrew, this was-
Yeah, I put a, I put the stick in the gear on this one.
Yep.
So, well, I mean, what I took from this was that you guys did a survey of twenty other towns, or got information, and everybody does, but one, Citizens Republic of Cambridge, does it the way you're proposing to do it. You know, I'm not... I get it, I'm still torn about this one. And I guess the comfort is that you've got the ability to waive. I guess I'm just still concerned that there are people who will find themselves in circumstances where exhausting their leave time before applying for domestic violence.
I think I understand your concern, and I certainly would never want to put any employee in a situation where the spirit and the intent of your concern is not satisfied.
I just don't want someone to have to say, I'm sick. And they're not sick, but they're being forced to say they're sick, so they're kind of violating the personnel policy.
That's a whole other issue.
Well, but that's.
We don't want to go down there.
Well, but that's, but that's a real concern.
Yeah.
So if somebody's in this situation, they need time off, they can't get time off until they exhaust their leave. The only way to exhaust their sick leave is to file for sick time, but they don't meet your standard definition for someone being sick. They can't go get a doctor's note. So I just want, I want there to be some process, I don't mind the policy, but some clarity on how somebody, and it's conveyed to staff through you, on how you're going to deal with this. So you're not opening yourself up to sick leave abuse, but at the same time, you're not putting somebody in a position, they don't want to put their job at, I can see somebody saying, I can't get access to the time off because I'm not done with my sick leave. I don't want to put my job in jeopardy by saying I'm sick when I'm not, because I know the town holds people to a reasonable standard for demonstrating that they're actually sick. And they end up stuck in a situation that's abusive as a result. And so that, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to keep.
And that's not going to happen.
So if, what?
I'll be honest, I, I know what you're talking about, in fact, we just went through this with my company. And this exact policy was debated, there's no good answer. It's like discretion, but it's not even, it's black and white. It's, I don't know, I don't even know if there's a right answer for this.
Well, I guess.
It's a very tough situation.
I guess just, you know, I have confidence in your ability to tuss out those situations that warrant the waiver. But I think it's just important that that's conveyed in a way that it's not perceived by anybody as preferential or arbitrary, or, you know, when you're not here, somebody else.
It'll be fair and consistent.
And, and known.
Yes.
With that, I'm comfortable adopting the, making a motion to adopt the policy.
I'm comfortable with it also, I second.
All right, roll call.
What, just add to, comment to that, so with what Andy just said and how you responded, how does, how is that going to change from the policy? I mean, I, I totally understand, you know, you putting it in your hands and, you know, I, I'm very comfortable with that, but again, black and white is black and white.
What happened is, Andrew had just said he'd take a verbal assurances from them.
Well, I'm just saying, I just want it to be clear to staff that the manager under this policy has the right to waive the exhaustion of their leave policy prior to accessing this. And under what circumstances you'd consider a waiver.
What, what I always say, given these types of situations, is does it pass the reasonable litmus test? And what are the totality of the circumstances? What I don't want to see, and I trust this won't happen in these circumstances, is a situation where somebody is abusing the system, not to be confused with the abuse that we're trying to protect.
Right. I just.
It's just that when people are in these situations, they're not at their best.
I agree.
And they're under an enormous amount of stress.
I a hundred percent agree with discretion at your discretion.
Yeah.
I just.
But that's what the policy says, I just want it to be conveyed to staff, what, what, what's reasonable and what's not. Come talk to me, I think is probably the, the bottom line that you'd be conveying to people.
And that'll be discussed at a department head meeting.
Okay.
Very good.
And that's all good with that.
So we're, we're good with that, and no more further discussion on this?
I'm in favor.
Me also.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I would respectfully request that the board indefinitely postpone the next policy until we've had an opportunity to look at a couple of other tweaks that need to be vetted out before it comes back to you.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on that? Just push it off?
Just push it off.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. All right, and.
Stickers?
No, that's why we just pushed off.
That's what I.
Still.
That's it.
I have one liaison report. And it brings, I kind of start the story, I went to the environmental oversight committee and talked about, and I've conveyed this to Rodney. Situation where I was at the transfer station several weeks ago. There's a car in front of me, truck in front of me, it had twenty, forty gallon bags in it if it had one. So he went around to the back inside, I went to the other side, just for laughs, I said, hey, they must have charged you a fortune for that. And he goes, nah, didn't charge me anything, those guys know me, I don't come very much, but they say it's okay. So, came back, took down the license plate, gave it to the manager, would you care to say what your findings were?
I can say that he wasn't authorized to be disposing of the bags that.
Was not?
He was not.
So, two issues, he's in without a sticker and he didn't get charged for extra. And so, I, we, I brought that up at the oversight committee, and I will tell you that, you know, there's a, this conversation about perhaps in the fall, town meeting warrant article by petition to go to a different system. I think we're at the point now where we've got a system that's subjected to, you know, waste, fraud, and abuse. I think that there's no effective control with the gate. There's no way to monitor it, and I think that, you know, waiting to see what the data is, and I think, you know, we need to, if we don't want to see this thing go to town meeting without our ability to manage it, in other words, have it go on a petition article, we need to get serious about what we want to do with the transfer station.
Need to get it serious with enforcement, I think.
Well.
And maybe a set of cameras at the gate and, and in the shed itself and take control of it, make sure that everyone's doing their job they're supposed to.
Because I guarantee you, I did not just happen to bump into the first, the first person and only person to do it.
I've seen it more than one time.
So I, I just think that we are currently overseeing a system that we know is subject to abuse. And, you know, we, we can, we can sort of mill around the edges about it, but it's, it's not right, just not right.
Can I add, actually, two comments to that? Believe it or not, I noticed three infractions. I can't confirm, but I do know that they were at least pickup trucks with at least eight to ten trash bags. And they did not get stopped to write a check for anything extra or nothing, and they went through, and this was Saturday. I don't know what it was, but everywhere I looked was a oversized pickup truck loaded to the top. And that was just this past Saturday. And on top of that, to Andy's point about what may come down the road as far as, you know, page with row or whatever, another option. I think we need to look at what our actual costs are in the transfer station, because if that day is to come to look at another solution, what are our costs and how do we cover them? I don't think we know that right now.
It's not that hard.
Well, I, again, but, you know, this is two and a half years.
Well, no, people haven't liked the answer, they've gotten the, we've gotten the answer, the numbers, and we could get the numbers again. You know, but we've got, we've got two problems, we've got, how do you pay for the trash? And then, how do you enforce an equitable system? And we're relying on a private contractor who, for whatever reason, not up to the job. So, one solution to that is, you know, you replace the contractor, you replace them with town employees, or you take the money out of the damn system and you just charge by, charge for the bag at the point of sale, and then you're done. So there, there are ways to, you know, there are ways to do it. And I think we, you know, we've all kind of gone into different camps and dug our heels in. I think, you know, we've given something a try, and I think it's, I think we are at the time where we need to step back, look at it again, or, or ten citizens of the town are going to do it for us. Put something in the town meeting, you might like, you might not like, and you might have to live with.
But again, we still don't know.
But you can head it off, if we come up with a system that we think addresses the equity, equity issues and provides some efficiency, I think, you know, we should, we should be the ones proposing that. You know I don't love going to town meeting, I would go to town meeting with a well-crafted proposal.
But if history's an invitation, it will get voted down.
We still don't know the cost though. We still do not know the costs of the transfer station.
Never have. I wouldn't want to tell you how many different figures I have.
And I'd be happy to, and I'm not talking about a wastewater committee that was, that was to investigate page with row and that solution. Again, two and a half years ago, a little more.
You mean solid waste?
I came in, huh?
You mean solid waste?
Solid waste, but I'm talking transfer, whatever it costs to distribute the waste, what does it cost for, you know, the scrap metal from.
Recycling?
Everything.
Right.
I mean, because, and even for just the awareness, people don't realize that, hey, I'll recycle everything. Their recycling costs almost half as much as regular solid waste. That's, people don't know that.
There's more manpower required than that, than equipment.
But what is, what is the actual cost of our transfer station? So then, at least, maybe it is a, maybe it's not a, the solution's a hundred and forty dollar, you know, sticker. And maybe page with row, you can't even propose a page with row solution without knowing the actual cost to cover the transfer station. We don't know. And this has been the same way two and a half years ago, and I think within six months of being as, serving in the selectmen, we were told that we're going to start to understand and track all the costs of the transfer station. And then when we get all those numbers, we can actually assess the actual costs. We still don't know.
Right.
So I would welcome any opportunity to dig into those numbers and to actually see what the actual costs are for our transfer station over our calendar year.
Actual cost, right.
Well, the last data that we did see.
Forty thousand shot.
Actually, it was less than that, I believe. Don't go on.
Chief, I can bring them in to you next week if you want, I've got, going back eight years on it. I've got eight different whole plans with eight different figures of what it costs us, from the same source.
So why can't we just take?
And, and they all add up to make something look better than the other.
Why can't we just take the actual cost you experienced in fiscal two thousand seventeen, say this is what it costs, you got audited financials?
That's.
What's so hard?
Asking for that, I.
I'm just saying, it's, I, you know, take one year in arrears, the last year that the books are closed, so nobody can screw with the numbers, they are what they are, and just break them out for us and say, here's what it costs. It's kind of a trivial exercise.
But in terms of the, the town subsidy, I think we were thinking it was going to be around fifteen thousand, and it was actually closer to five?
I don't remember, I know it was five percent.
Five percent, I think.
Yeah.
I, I'm talking percent.
Yeah, it was five percent, it was forty thousand dollars difference. And that could be, could have been a maintenance.
But I think initially it was expected to be around fifteen.
Yes.
It's always been, it was always, for years, up until a couple of years ago, we charged it twenty-five percent. The figure in, and God knows where that extra money went, but it was always twenty-five percent. And it hasn't been twenty-five percent.
But anyway, whenever you guys can get that information together, I just think a one-year retrospective, this is what it costs. Give you a pretty good number.
The shame of it is, you know, if, if what you're telling me.
You're going to be told that, I'll tell you the excuse, you're going to be told, well, it creates a problem because it's two different years, because we have a.
Just take a year, just take a snapshot.
I know.
Take two years and average them, I don't care.
That's what you're going to be told.
But here's what I was, my, what I was getting at. It seems to me, for the most part, what I see, most of the people, except for obviously a small percentage of people, are sliding through with trucks full of rubbish. And the enforcement and the people that are operating the transfer station, if they're not doing their job, they ought to be replaced. Because if the residents of the, in this town, for the most part, are doing their job, and they're doing their recycling, and they're paying the fee, we're almost at a break-even point. They're doing exactly what we've asked them to do. And if the operator's working against us and the residents, then they need to move, move out. It's time to replace them. Put people in there that want this job, they're going to do their job properly. That's what it amounts to, you don't wait to do it next year, we'll do it now. Fix the guy, pull him out of the shed, put another guy in there, give him his job, if he can't do his job, we'll get somebody else. I mean, everybody's working hard to, to bring their trash and do the right thing. I know I do, I spend, I'm a better recycler than I ever have, I probably bring three bags to one bag of solid, if that. I mean, I think we all do, I mean, that's the way it works. But to throw out the whole system when, when we're, we're working against the operator, something's wrong, something's wrong.
I agree, at least one thing's wrong. That I think we can all agree on, that the contractor performance is not adequate.
Clearly, you, you are, you saw it, you know, and that shouldn't happen. They're paid to do a job, if they're in violation of the contract, then they shouldn't be there.
I make a motion, may adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes.